Planning board for September four, twenty twenty four. We'll call please.
Mark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmark here.
Kevin Hein here.
Deirdre Hobson here.
It's very good. Schmidt Fisher here as well. Hello.
Good.
Hello.
All right, um, our first order of business is a request for a lot release on the subdivision at Heritage Lane or Heritage Estates, whatever it's called. Um, do we have anyone here, Cassandra, who's presenting that?
Yes, Greg Morris is here.
Okay, Greg, welcome. You have the floor. All right, congratulations on your big sailing race. I saw that somewhere.
Thank, thank you, Tom. It was, uh, it was an adventure and a half. Thanks.
All right, um, go ahead.
Yep. So for the record, my name's Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering, representing the applicant Highland Estates LLC. This is a request for the final lot release at the Highland Estates subdivision off of Beechwood Street. Uh, the project was originally approved by the planning board back in two thousand six, was constructed shortly thereafter. Uh, since then, all of the lots have been built with the exception of Lot Six. Lot Six is the lot that was held by the town of Cohasset for the performance guarantee in completing the subdivision. Uh, we appeared before the planning board in January of two thousand twenty-two. Um, and the planning board had hired a peer review consultant prior to that meeting to go over the punch list and outstanding items of the subdivision. There were three items that were identified. We feel that we've addressed those. Uh, one of them had to do with construction of a forebay in the detention basin that was completed this past year. The second was construction of one of the detention basins, the berm around it. Uh, was slightly low in a couple of locations. Uh, additional fill was brought in and a berm was brought up to the proper elevation. And last but not least, there had been identified that the drain manholes did not have formed inverts within them. Um, we spoke at length about this back in January of twenty twenty-two, um, about whether formed inverts were really necessary. And that's probably going to be a little bit of a further discussion tonight. Uh, the inverts have not been formed at this time. It is my professional opinion, and I believe Weston and Sampson's based on their most recent letter, that it's not a necessity for a drain manhole to have a formed invert in it. A formed invert is typically reserved for an application where sewer is present, which is not what we have here.
Excuse me, could you define what that means? Your, the invert?
Sure. So this is inside of a drainage manhole where you have a pipe that comes into the manhole and a pipe that leaves the manhole. Um, interior of that manhole, sometimes you would build an invert or essentially build a pipe, like or a half of a pipe through the manhole so that water is directed from the inlet pipe to the outlet pipe. That's typically done, like I said, in a sewer application so that you have continuous flow from the inlet to the outlet to prevent, um, solids from settling out in that application. In drainage scenarios, though, it's, it's clean water. Um, water moves from the inlet to the outlet. Um, without the necessity for having a formed invert inside of that manhole. Uh, I think the discrepancy in what brought this up is that the plans that were approved by the planning board and signed by the planning board when it was approved in two thousand six showed a drainage manhole detail which did not have formed inverts on it. However, if you read the, um, subdivision rules and regulations, there's a citation I could give you that requires formed inverts in it. So there was a discrepancy between the regulations and the plans that were endorsed and approved. Um, again, it's typically you don't do formed inverts in drainage manholes. They're for sewer manholes. Um, most commercial site plans that you see, I would gather, any of the ones that have come from my office anyways, uh, do not have formed inverts in any of the drainage structures. So.
Okay, thank you.
Those were the three items we were asked to address since last January. I think we've addressed the, the two ones that required the site work anyways. Weston and Sampson went out, um, and did a, a more recent peer review. Uh, and I'm going to turn it over to you. I believe we've satisfied everything for the release of Lot Six.
Okay, thank you. Um, Cassandra, can you just summarize what Weston Sampson's most recent letter said? I have to admit that I hadn't read it.
Uh, yes, you'll have to give me a moment to pull it up.
I mean, I guess bottom line, are they confirming that all of this has been done?
Pretty much. That was the bottom line, but I can provide a better summary. Just have to pull it up.
Sorry you put it on the spot.
No, it's okay. Sorry I didn't have it ready. I should have. Most of the items, um, they say that, uh, the previous comment had been addressed and that no further action is required. One punch list that they, um, recommended that the board review was for, um, punch list item number ten, all drain manholes are required to have formed inverts, which Greg was speaking about. Um, they basically just say that they recommend that the board review it. They don't say much other than that. But everything else they said was addressed.
Yeah. Anyone on the board have any questions, comments?
But the board approved this almost twenty years ago, right?
Yeah. Originally, yeah.
It's been a long haul.
That it has. Um, all right, well, let me intervene here with, there's a member of the public who has got some questions, uh, someone named Anne. Anne, do you want to be promoted so that we can take your question live? See if you can.
I'll offer to promote Anne. They have declined.
Okay, so. Uh, comment is there's an HOA in this subdivision. There are bylaws created to the LLC that have not been completed. Perhaps we can send the rules to be reviewed. The LLC has not attended annual meetings. Assume it means conducted annual meeting. Uh, she didn't mean to decline, so see if you can. Because the comment is a little confusing. I'm assuming Anne must live in the subdivision, don't know the nature of the comment.
Anne will be rejoining.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, I apologize. I wasn't quite sure how I could log in, so I appreciate you inviting me.
All right, well, first identify yourself by name and address, please.
Anne Marie Baker, eleven Stratford Terrace, a buddy neighbor to the five Stratford Terrace lot that is under review right now.
Okay. And you want to just summarize what your comment was, something about the, I guess, the HOA.
Would you like to speak?
Okay, so I was just, I know that the planning board's not in charge of HOA, but we were all made aware of as we purchased our individual lots in the subdivision that, um, the LLC, uh, Tony Anthony had items that, excuse me, needed to be completed in the, uh, private development here. And on our list, those items have not been completed. He has been, um, a challenge to work with. And I think that Chuck, you said it's been a long haul and we certainly feel that way as we've been here since two thousand and eleven. Um, so as we knew the last lot, as he refers to as the crown jewel, was now looking to be developed. Um, not even as in a butter, but there's obviously all the homeowners here are part of the HOA. He's been very, um, difficult to get a hold of, um, to do completion. Um, Greg, I'm sure you walked around the lot as you looked at it. The sidewalks are in disrepair near his lot. There are stones that are crumbling down. This neighborhood is full of children. We've tried to address safety issues. It's just been very challenging, so I thought this might be a place where we could look to, um, have him acknowledge some of those things that have caused a problem in this subdivision. And we haven't really had a platform to be able to address it without getting phone calls returned or emails or paperwork.
All right, well, I mean, it sounds like there's two different things. There's issues with the homeowners association and then you're saying there's infrastructure that's in disrepair at this point?
Um, I, yes, I would. I think at one point I had gone into the town hall to show pictures of the lot because he started clearing it when, when we knew that the conservation law was coming about as well as large homes, um. So he started to preempt that. And yes, the side that's actually on Heritage Lane has ledge. And there are sizable boulders that go into the road, and that's where quote unquote the sidewalk is for all the families and homeowners here. And no one in that cul-de-sac has, their children play and walk in the road because, um, they can't use sidewalks.
Is it just in the area of this lot?
Um, yes, it is, because as Greg had said, or someone had said, all the other lots are, are developed now, so they all have landscaping down to the, just the road or the street.
Do you know what Greg, what the plan is for this lot? Is the size of a house? If there's been visible wedge removal and if there's been concom, you know, jurisdiction, I, you know, he needs to go through all the proper channels before he builds on the spot.
Yeah, absolutely. This lot has gone through, um, stormwater review and was issued a stormwater permit. I don't have with the records with me now if it's gone through a large home review or not. Uh, I don't think the architectural plans have been brought to that level of detail at this point. Until the lot's released, they can't move forward with a building permit application or the large home review aspect of that. Um.
Well, has there been, has there been surface ledge, exposed ledge that's been removed?
There certainly is exposed ledge on the lot, um, and I'm not aware that any ledge has been removed as part of a home development on that lot. We certainly did go in and do perk tests. There was an excavator there. We dug a lot of soil doing perk tests. Um, there has not been any blasting. There has not been any significant ledge removal aside from soil testing for a septic system.
Well, yeah, with this board, it sounds like he may have to do both the land alteration special permit and a large home review, so just be aware of that.
Yep, we're, we're aware of those requirements.
As far as the HOA goes, I don't know that we have jurisdiction over that. I don't know what the permit said about an HOA. It probably might have said something that one was being created, but if the developer only owns one lot, I would have thought by now the HOA would be in control of most of the owners. Um, HOAs are often set up the same way condos are, and when you get to the point of seventy-five percent non-developer ownership, the, you know, there's the transition. Owners take control of the board, the majority of the seats. The developer may stay till the very end, but um, I'm kind of curious as to why that hasn't happened here, but I'm not sure we have any jurisdiction to enforce anything about the HOA.
Would there be a way that we could just maybe bullet point what all the precondition, um, things are that the town needs for the lot to be released? Was there any?
The lot being released is what we're dealing with tonight. And there was, and the, the lot is held up and for the purposes of making sure that the infrastructure of a subdivision is all installed and done correctly. And, you know, we think, we, as Greg pointed out, we were here, you know, a year and a half ago, more than that, um, we had a punch list of things that were not done. Most of, all of them have been done, and the one that hasn't been done is being recommended that it not, not need to be done because we're not dealing with sewer manholes. So I think we're in a position to release the lot, and our expert isn't telling us anything to the contrary. Uh, who, our expert, who's engineer, who's gone out and seen the site themselves. After that, they still need certain, they need a building permit. Uh, he says they already got a stormwater permit, but, you know, they will come to us for at least a large home review with not a ledge alteration, land alteration special permit. And, uh, depending on some other things, they may, may need relief from the zoning board. They need a variance. So, you know, there's other permits that have to come before that house appears. Um, but if we're talking about, you know, loose rocks and damaged sidewalk today, I presumably that's all going to be rectified when that lot's developed. I don't know that we're going to hold up a lot release over that. I saw Kevin hand up and then Amy here too. Either, either one of you go first.
Go ahead.
Kevin. Yeah, I, I would, I would, I'm just curious as to the current description of the lot. You know, it hasn't been utilized in decades, it sounds like. Are there soil piles on it? Has it turned into, um, a place for convenient dumping of materials? Um, and or, you know, as a part of any of the perk testing or movement of earth moving equipment in and around the site? Have, um, boulders been moved? Um, are there aggregate piles? Can someone describe the current condition of the lot to me? It sounded like from the member of the public, there were concerns with how it is now.
So I've been out to the lot, not super recently, but within the last year. Um, it was naturally vegetated as a forested lot, um, when this subdivision got built. Homes have been built on both sides of this lot. This lot is not a large lot. It's thirty-five thousand square feet in size, so about three quarters of an acre. Um, homes have been built on either side of it. Um, in one case, one of the butter's lawns extends pretty significantly onto this property. Um, there's probably a couple small piles of maybe a couple of yards of crushed stone that's been dumped on this lot. I think there's one or two pieces of maybe drainage pipe or water pipe left over from when the road was built. Just kind of sitting on this lot. It was not used as a, a stockpile lot or a material staging area. These are not significant quantities of materials, um, but kind of leftover and they've, they have been sitting there since the road was built. Um, in the, you know, two thousand eight, two thousand ten era, kind of in that timeframe. Um, it's, I would say it's generally, it's a vegetated lot. It has exposed ledge on it. It has vegetated surfaces over the majority of the lot.
And I guess, I'm sorry, this is Anne Marie again. I guess I would also, um, say, Greg, if, I'm not sure if you walked up into the lot to observe all the things you're right. There are like crusher stone and things there, and that hasn't been an issue as one of the butter neighbors. One of the issues that I did have is when he had a bulldozer in there and probably knocked down twenty to twenty-five trees. So that was, um, a few years ago. But that opened up a very large portion of that lot. I'm also aware of conservation now and the percentage-ish of trees. And as you said, the neighbor's lawn goes way over, so now it's going to be, I don't know what that does to conservation and how they look at that. But it certainly is something that, um, seemed to have happened. I'm not sure why they needed the space, but that certainly, if you go up where the proper, you know, kind of gravel driveway is, it's right at the top somewhat in the center of the lot. And I, I did witness, um, at least one of your trucks there not that long ago. We just happened to face out right towards the cul-de-sac, so we see everything going on. But, um, y- you know, that, that hadn't been prior. That wasn't the natural state of that lot. And you're correct, the neighbors, that clear green space with actually sprinkler heads in it um, was done a while ago, so it already gives a lot of very open space to that thirty-eight thousand or whatever you said, square foot lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the ledge is definitely crumbling if anyone, you know, wants to do a drive-by. You can see very clearly how that could be, um, potentially a big, big safety hazard, especially to the young kids that are riding their bikes and, and curious.
Yeah, I know it was a, it was a couple of years ago that we did the soil testing with the Board of Health at this lot. I know it was a, it was a larger excavator that did the soil testing. Um, I don't know that he took down any trees outside of where the houses are going or where the septic system is going. Um, he, he wasn't taking trees down to clear the lot at that time. There were trees certainly taken down. Um, but for the purposes of soil testing in those areas that ultimately would be disturbed. And like I said, this does already have a stormwater permit with those areas on the conservation plan. Uh, it wasn't to get around any permitting requirements. We went to the Conservation Commission and already obtained that permit. Um, so exposed ledge out front, you know, whoever presumably is moving into this property is going to want to be a good residential neighbor. If there's ledge that's loose and crumbling onto the sidewalk, I'm sure as the lot gets developed, that would be cleaned up. You know, it needs to be left in a safe condition and that's, you know, ultimately hopefully what's going to happen here when this gets built.
Um, I think I'm next. Uh, so let's talk a little bit about the HOA. So what, can you describe the structure of your HOA and can you just describe the operation of your HOA?
Uh, this is Michael Bay Gray. I also live at eleven Stratford Terrace. Um, the HOA uh, charges fees for, um, general maintenance of the area. Um, and it's, it's composed of all the residents on Stratford Terrace and, and, and Heritage Lane.
So do you have a manager for an HOA?
I'm one of the trustees.
But do you have an, an external manager?
No, we do not.
Okay, and, um, do you, are you, are you accumulating resources financially to manage what could be, uh, what a typical HOA's challenge would be, like sidewalks? Things which, uh, would be written into the deed as the HOA is being formed?
Well, actually, that, that, that's actually a good point. Um, I, I believe part of the punch list is for Mr. Nader to have fully developed sidewalks in the neighborhood. And I, I believe there are areas that do not have second coats. Um, that, that were, I, I mean, there seems to be some disagreement. He seems to think that there were second coats performed, but there's still the binder coat on there with no top coat on certain areas of the sidewalk. There were areas of the sidewalk that we deferred not to have as a, as a neighborhood. But I, I don't believe that those are, there are some areas of the sidewalk that are not completed.
Right, unfortunately, we really don't have jurisdiction over that. That's a piece of, um, legal operation that.
Wasn't that, wasn't that a condition for him to get the permit?
Uh, it, uh, an HOA, you, you can.
No, no, I'm not talking about the HOA.
Amy, get off the HOA. It's not relevant to our.
I'm not talking about the HOA.
About a lot released. Does he met all the conditions of a lot release, which is, are, is all the infrastructure in the subdivision in place? Yes, no, that's the sole issue in front of us.
Right, so I, I don't believe the sidewalk, there are, there are areas of the sidewalk, I believe, that are hundred percent completed, but there are areas that are not, in my opinion, so.
And it also was just brought to our attention when we purchased the lot. It was, it was brought to our attention that when he got the approval to get the subdivision overall, we were one of the first buyers of the lots, that the town was holding back this. They, they set the non-release of that lot because they wanted to ensure he completed the things that he was supposed to do that he originally listed as part of the subdivision. So that rolled over into what we're referring to as the HOA. All of that legal documentation in our HOA states that these things should have been done at the beginning of the subdivision, and we've been fighting over that with, with, to no avail.
So I guess again, that they, I, I, as you were stating, sir, I think that the question is whether or not the punch list is done or not.
And our expert says it is. Our, our engineer that we, we hire that works for us says everything has been done.
Uh, Tom, but, but we were just told that the punch list could potentially include the sidewalks and they're not finished. So how can we make that determination? Wouldn't we have to have asked Greg to, uh, determine that all of the elements that were originally expected are totally completed?
Uh, Greg, go ahead.
The sidewalks have been completed out here.
Instead of, largely in front of two Stratford.
Don't interrupt him, please. Don't interrupt him. Let him speak.
The original sidewalks were laid to a binder course, and then in approximately two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, I was on site when the top coat went on to sidewalks, as was the town's peer review consultant at the time, John Maudzaluski. Since that time, I submitted a roadway as-built plan to the Cohasset Planning Board. That documents the location of the sidewalks as well. John Maudzaluski had put together a punch list back in two thousand eighteen-ish. Um, completion of the sidewalks was not on that list because they had been completed. Weston and Sampson's been to the site twice since then. It has not been brought up in either of their peer reviews. The sidewalks were completed.
So again, I think there's some disagreement there because if you look in front of two Stratford Terrace, it's not, there, there's different elevations to the sidewalk. Um, I, I gotta, it, there, there were, there is correct, the binder coat was put on the surface of the roads in the, in the year, um, that he just mentioned, but I, I, the sidewalk in certain areas on Heritage to, to, to Stratford don't appear uniform and, and seem to have that second coat on them, so.
I don't mean to be the bad guy here, but we can't go on. It doesn't seem to be fun. You know, we've had two expert opinions, the developers, that I'll always take with a grain of salt on our own. And two different consultants that we've had over the years. I, I, you know, I don't think we can stop this because of a speculation that the sidewalk isn't done.
I don't know that it's pure speculation. It's even to the. It looks pretty, I mean, again, it looks to the naked eye. I, I think, I'm, I'm not talking about the full sidewalk. I'm talking about a certain area, uh, of it that does. There's been no other work done to these, these driveways. That, that house that I'm referring to was completed when the top coat was put on the subdivision. And it, it, you can tell where the sidewalk ends and, and, and doesn't, so. Anyways, that's, that's my feedback.
Is this the area of the sidewalk in front of the lot we're talking about?
I'm sorry?
Is the sidewalk that you think isn't finished the area in front of this lot we're talking about tonight?
It's opposite from it, yes. No, it's not right in front of it, no. But again, if that was a condition for the, the lot to be released, then I don't.
Let me just ask, is there anybody, I see three other members of the public here. Is there any one of them that wish to speak on this topic or write a question in the Q and A box? Um, if not, I'm going to ask, what's the board's pleasure here?
Uh, um, Tom, I, I just have a question. Is there a possibility that our, um, engineer did not look at this area that's been brought to our attention by the residents or a resident in this area?
Since they're not here, I can't answer that question.
All right, well, then I think we need to get an answer to that question, and I think it would perhaps behoove us to ask the applicant to consider. Let's all get on the same page here. I mean, i- i- if the, if the sidewalk was completed, but it was completed to a substandard so that it hasn't weathered the test of time in an area outside of this lot area, but something that, that that they were responsible for, and that's part of the reason why this was being held, I think we're not in a position to favorably act on this at this time. And we need to get our expert and counsel, uh, consultant on board with regard to whether there's a substandard issue that exists now for something that was supposed to be done that would weather the test of time so that we could favorably vote on this and release the lot. I'm not against doing so, but I'm not against agreeing something that is done to a substandard, uh, measure by people that live in the neighborhood.
Okay. What's, what's the rest of the board? Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
Um, I was just going to note for, um, Kevin's comment that in the peer review memo that we just received from Weston and Sampson, at the end of it, it states that other punch list items and applicant responses appear. at the end of it, it states that other punch list items and applicant responses appear to have been adequately addressed or otherwise may require discretionary consideration by the board. Um, they have refrained from offering comment on these items. I can, of course, reach out to Weston and Sampson if that's the board's pleasure. Um, there is also Andrew Nader in the audience um who would like to speak.
Please promote him.
Um, and uh, it's, it's not perfect, but if the board would like an aerial view of the lot in question, um, I can pull that up on near map.
That would be great, cuz I'm on Google Earth right now looking at it, so that would help. Thank you.
Um, it, it also, when you said near map, um Cassandra, do you mean the software that allows you to look back in time? Um, the town has that Conservation Commission uses it regularly. We haven't really dabbled with it. But it does give you a sense of what has happened.
Yes, I can look back in time, um, obviously not to like specific dates. It's just whenever they did the aerial imaging.
Right.
Um, but yes, I can go back. Um, so I'm going to. Mr. Nader had his hand raised, but is declining to be promoted. Oh, now he's getting promoted. Um. So this is the lot in question. Um, to Amy's note, so this aerial imaging was taken April of this year. You can go back and see that um October third of twenty-three, this is what the lot looked like.
So they, they de-vegetated the lot, so it wasn't, um.
Some of it, I think, is that there's just a lack of foliage in this image.
Yes, it's a change in season and foliage.
And where is the sidewalk that's alleged to be deficient?
I'm presuming and um they could correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that they're discussing this area here where you can see a sidewalk that kind of starts and ends. Um, please.
So does that represent uh an unfinished sidewalk that now has been finished? Or was that waiting until the lot would be released for there to be a sidewalk all around the um uh circle?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know if you could still hear me. So um, the circle that you can see on your map as you go to the right and then you take a right, the sidewalk starts on the opposite corner lot and goes all the way down to South Main Street. The part of the sidewalk that is um, that is in question goes, uh, I'm sorry, goes to Beechwood. The sidewalk in question um starts a rate kind of at where you can see the driveway of the opposite corner lot and then goes down Heritage Lane to Beechwood. I apologize, not Main Street, South Main.
This simple question, is the sack supposed to have a sidewalk on it all the way around? Greg, yes or no?
That was waived by the planning board.
Okay. And so where is this deficient sidewalk? Somebody pointed out specifically telling me what it is.
It's completely the lot opposite across the street from the lot being reviewed. It starts in the point, the corner point of that lot and goes all the way down the right towards Beechwood Street. So not in the cul-de-sac area, more on Heritage Lane. Yes. Does that help you?
I suppose. Is it go, are you saying the entire sidewalk all the way to Beechwood Street is deficient?
Nope, not all the way to Beechwood Street. No, I'm not saying that. I think it's probably the entire, most of the sidewalk on the lot of the, the other corner lot opposite of the one we're discussing tonight. I think it's too Stratford Terrace.
All right, uh, Greg, is your client online? Was he wanna speak?
I believe Andrew Nader is on.
Mr. Nader, if you wanna say something, now would be the time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Callan. Can, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, hi, everybody, and uh, Mr. and Mrs. Baker. My name is Andy Nader. I'm, I'm Tony Nader, son and representative of the firm that owns the, the land here. Um, as Greg had noted, the subdivision has been complete for well over a decade. Um, and all of the infrastructure that went in has been as-built and peer-reviewed um three times now, confirming what the deficient issues were in the subdivision. The list has been dwindled down to three items, and that's what was being reviewed here tonight. Um, per the Weston and Sampson peer review letter, those have now been satisfied. Um, so to bring up other concerns outside of that, I don't believe that this is the correct location to be discussing that, as it's not pertinent to the release of this lot itself. However, Mr. and Mrs. Baker, if there is an issue with the sidewalk, we'd be happy to review it with you. I'm not sure the exact location that you're discussing. Perhaps there's been differential settlement over the years. Uh, and we can take a look and review what's going on, but as previously noted, all of the infrastructure in the subdivision has been recorded as-built and accepted as complete by the town at this point. And there were three remaining items that have now been addressed. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Gonna wait.
All right. What's the board's pleasure? And when I have Weston and Sampson look at it one more time, I don't personally think it's necessary. I'm hearing a not all, not too uncommon dispute between homeowner association and the developer, and that's not for us to get involved in, but you know, we've had this reviewed. It hasn't been brought to our attention by expert review that it's a problem. And I don't know that legally we have a any basis to deny the release based on what's been reported to us, both by Mr. Morrison by our own consultants. But that's just my opinion. Anybody?
I would propose that the uh lot in question be released and the owner of said parcel and its developer continue fruitful and active discussions with the neighbors for future activities. You know, it's gonna go a lot easier if you got the, your, your neighbors on board with what you wanna do on this lot when you move beyond release of it, if that's how this board decides. Uh, I would, I would move that we put forth release of this lot and encourage fruitful and active discussions between the developer and the neighbors continue.
And Mr. Nader, I don't know if you heard it earlier, but this is going to need a large home review, I assume, based on what I'm looking at, the sizes of other houses up there. And you are probably going to need a land alteration special permit to deal with the exposed ledge. Or at least it's going to have to be reviewed. Um, so this is, you know, if the lot is released, it's not a license to start carrying on and start stripping a lot and start developing. There's some other permits that are gonna need to be obtained before that happens. I want you to be aware of that, so. Anybody else on the board have a thought on this and how to proceed?
Um, I second, I think it, um, what Kevin says in light of the fact that we don't have standing on the issues that we are debating.
All right, well then. You have nothing else. I'm gonna take Kevin's comments as a motion to prove lot, lot release.
I second him.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion from anybody? All right, and all in favor of the motion? Alphabetical roll call, please.
Mark Brewer, I.
Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Evan Hein, I.
Yoda Hobson, I.
And Doug, it's pretty high. I don't know. Am I voting today?
You can vote. So. All right, and the lot will be released. We'll be looking forward to your applications for the other permits that are gonna be necessary. Um, and um uh Cassandra, make sure that John Howland's aware of our concerns about the, the ledge removal and to stay on top of that for us, please. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. All right, um, Cassandra, is Carolyn joining us tonight?
Uh, I believe she had said she was unavailable.
Oh, great. All right. All right, well, everybody saw that uh Carolyn has done some more editing. I wish she was here, but be that as it may. I think. I'm not, this is, this is Carolyn's edits along with what we had last week. I think we are set with the wind, are we not? All right, so on the solar, the wind we seem to be set on and we did because uh when we changed the commercial district on three A, we incorporated all the uses except for a couple, um, but including uh wind turbines and ground mounted solar facilities, which were allowed in technology business. Those are now gonna be allowed in three A. So I gotta, let me see, I gotta minimize this so I can see. She's suggesting keeping this language um in the purpose and intent. I mean, part of the intent of this was to shorten this thing up, but um if there's no problem with the highlighted language, um I, I don't have a problem with it either way if it stays in. It was gonna be just shortened to just what's here consistent with the common off green communities and. So is everybody okay with that suggestion she has? Which is this, all this, all, all this highlighted language in the uh purpose and intent section would come back in.
I don't see any problem with bringing it back if that's based on her recommendation.
Yeah, I don't either. Let's see, paragraph one could be deleted because the existing solar station's landfill will be permitted to continue with any alterations subject to the sign by Weston and Sampson. Okay. All right. We can do that. And what's this note? All right, so you see her note here about the three A district. We're requiring the for a large ground mounted solar system to be, so solar uh panels to be on a site of at least one acre. So we run a risk is what she's pointing out that we may um we may get this rejected if they think it's too restrictive. Of course, prior to this bylaw, you know, the existing bylaw limited the solar arrays to the landfill, so that's pretty restrictive. So I think this this is an expansion somewhat, but um, you know, that's a risk I'm willing to run to see if they reject that, so. I would keep paragraph two in the way, keep paragraph two in as it's written. What's this? Well, um. Okay. SPP under our table of uses, uses is just means special permit planning board, right?
Correct.
SP is special permit for the zoning board and SPP is for us. So I think maybe she's just misunderstanding SPP's stance.
Uh, Tom, I went through and edited this. Um, I didn't send it to everybody because I didn't think that was appropriate, but I went in and because there are place, just little niggly things, but they do distract from interpreting what she's writing, cuz otherwise it's very, very clear.
All right, anybody does any edits, send it to me, please. I, I, I'm trying to keep a single working document here and I don't want too many hands cup, cup, dealing with it. Uh, okay, all right, so this comment is going back to what we were talking about before about the so that would mean this word would change to lot. All right, so that, that comment she makes makes sense there too, so. All right. All right, I think, I think we're all good with that. Everybody all set with those, you know, her notes and her recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll, I'll fix this after we're done tonight. All right, the next one was the reform of the floodplain district. I guess she has not done anything else with that, that's well, it's in review for both Carolyn's office as well as EAG's office, so I guess we're all set there. Okay. We were gonna deal with four as well tonight. Any did anybody else, I mean, we talked at the last meeting, I know Birgit and Kevin both mentioned some things. Are you are you looking at this?
Yeah, no, they, yeah, Kevin and I, we met bef- before our meeting here and, and we had some, some good discussion. And we have a couple of points where we would like to, you know, kind of um, um revisit a tiny bit. Um. And I also have a comment on, on Carolyn's comment about, you know, kind of, she had a problem with the exemption about permanent um, uh principal structure or primary structure and accessory. We, there was the garage, the definition um that she did not quite like, and then she said, you know, I kinda like, why don't we just uh treat all of that um as um exempt. So basically all th- that's at least how I understood it, the entire list of structures that we had um put together that uh we want to review for a special permit, you know, and kind of to add that to the exemptness. I'm like, no, 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 this is not what we want. I think she put that into her, or maybe not in the um document here, but in the email that she was sending out. She had um a couple of further suggestions there. So what I was just um citing here, that was, I think, in the email, not so much in the comment here. Um. So for um what Kevin and I, we had um four points altogether that um we would like to um briefly discuss. Um, and Kevin, please jump in if, if, if I'm missing something.
Is there something written that we can put up on the screen?
Ooh.
If not, just go ahead.
No, um, since we just met right before the meeting, um the um, the exemption and that's um scroll further down, it's in um uh, let me, the four points, let me, let me, let me summarize them and then we can, can tackle them one by one. Um. The exemption, the primary structure exemption. The exemption, the primary structure exemption. And that one, I would like to look at where it says like, to the extent that. You have excavated, to be a little bit more specific, I already did. Had my suggestions there last week.
I'm sorry, where are you talking?
Further down, this is the clearing, go further down, the next one in, in earth removal, yes. Just that one, number C. Where does it, material removed does not exceed. The volume, oh, you did already, you know, and kind of continue on that one, the volume required to build the corresponding structure. Sewer system utility. And Kevin, I suggested that we add there the below grade portion of the primary structure. Now it's provided that the volume. I mean, I, I, I like my previous wording here too. But that we are very specific in terms of what can be taken out and, you know, can in relation to what is being built. And.
So the, the idea is there's a ton of leeway here, the way it's presented.
So the existing bylaw had a ton of leeway because it had a lot of exemptions.
And so that's how we end up with the Cunningham Bridge, okay? Where it's not only a quarry, okay, it's an earth removal site right now, okay? So the idea is if the volume required to build the corresponding structure, okay? Was limited by the amount of the structures below grade. Apertures. You can call it a basement, you can call it a cellar, you can call it a walkout family room, whatever it is. There's dimensional requirements that would be provided by that, okay? That could, that could be used as a limit for below grade. calculation of what this volume is that we're talking about here. To build the corresponding structure as it's written right now, the volume required to build the corresponding structure. Just. Leaves, leaves a lot to be desired with regard to any type of limits to excavation. And so in our discussions, the idea was if we limited it to that which was below. Current grade, the basement portion of a building. If it was limited to that, then we would have more ability to control what they're moving and what they wanna. Do with a site.
All right. Let me go back first to Carolyn's note here. The whole point of C, the way it's rewritten. Was to say that the exemption, and this, this is all prefaced by that this is the exemptions to an earth removal permit. Was to limit it to the primary structure. Yes, system and utilities.
Defined as what, Tom? When you say primary structure, what does that mean?
The house.
The house, but. Is that the house and the basement?
It's a capitalized term, it's defined somewhere else in the bylaw, I, okay? Let me just, just. The current bylaw. Exempts. Any removal of, and again, we're only regulating exposed ledge, not subsurface ledge. At the moment, under the current file. And right now, anything that's removed. For the house, all accessory structures, driveways, utilities is exempt. So basically, we're only preventing you from removing or needing a permit to remove exposed ledge. Where you're landscaping and yard, basically. The intent of this was to get rid of all the exemptions for the accessory structures and driveways. And just have the primary building, so for Carolyn to add back accessory structures defeating the purpose. And the only reason a garage was mentioned, and that's something I threw in there quick last meeting, because. We got into this discussion about a garage, you know, is it attached? Fully attached to the house, you know, within the house, under the house, or is it, you know, attached by a breezeway and considered accessory? You know, and that people would get around. The ban on, you know, the, the fact that there's no exemption for the accessory, they'd get around it somehow. So, so this thing she's highlighted here, accessory structure has to come back out. Defeating the whole purpose of it. Now, the garage, you know, again. If we take out dimension of a garage and then further up, I define. I tried to add a quick definition of a garage and what's connected, what connected means and what it doesn't mean. Where I put it, but it's somewhere up here.
It's not that far up, it's right above.
I mean. And this was just a quick response last week to the, the discussion we were having about a garage being attached, semi-attached. You know, to, to not let there be a loophole. We don't have to mention a garage at all, other than the fact that, that it would be. Yeah, well, again. A standalone garage is clearly an accessory structure that's no longer gonna have an exemption, so I think we need to mention garage, okay? And, and to determine whether it's attached or detached, we need some kind of boundary, and that's why I suggested this, and I'm. I just think that Carolyn's note here is kind of missing the point of what we're trying to do, which is to get rid of the exemptions. That's why further down. You know, driveway and other things are, are all taken out as exemptions.
And we have put them back in, we put that back in.
By, 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 by this word, yes. But I think this is here. To. Distinguish a garage that is part of the house and one that is not part of the house. This in, and in conjunction with the definition that I put in here.
I just looked at the ECO three sixty and there's no definition for primary structure. There might be a definition for, for structure.
Let me just see. Well, well, that's easy enough to deal with. It's easy enough to do. Primary structure on a commercial. That deals with that. Is that sufficient? That at least gives it some definition. I mean, I just, I guess, I, I, I don't, you know, we, we need to get these things put to bed, but. I think Carolyn was missing the point of what we were trying to accomplish on this.
Yeah, that was what I was referring to, that, you know, kind of, yeah, the exemption.
Let me go, let, let's just go back to. From the beginning. This definition of garage, stay or go? Because a garage can be both part of the primary structure or it can be an accessory structure, I think we should make the distinction.
And to kind of counter the loopholes that we see with Cunningham, where they have this breezeway. And then that opens up to a huge primary structure that then justifies all the ledge removal.
All right, and then. We'll put this in for primary structure, so it's clear. There is a concept in the law that we can, we give some words their plain and ordinary meaning and we don't have to define every word, but. I can see the purpose of doing it for here. All right, so we keep those two things and. I don't see the need for number four. This is, this is the activities subject to the permit. There's number, oh. Oh, this is a different number, what she's writing here. A lot site has been, or the definition of an undeveloped lot, okay? All right, that one's okay. Is everybody understand what she's saying here? This, this language right here. Somebody might say the passive walking trails makes the lot developed, she, she would say. So basically not to limit the sole human activity to just exploratory work, so, like, I don't have a problem with that. All right, so. The next comment, the stormwater bylaw. I assume the intent is that any project only requiring administrative approval on the store would not require planning. No. Negri change is not subject to the jurisdiction. Well, I guess, I guess the answer here is that this should go. That should probably go this right here. All right, and we got rid of the eighteen thousand thing and should the CIA just give us some. What about any land integration that does not involve structures, someone might apply for the land off simply to improve their view or replace a copse of trees with a lawn? So that means. This. Well, that makes more. All right, paragraphs, now getting into the amount of clearing that's allowed, and she's right about this. Oh, shit, I just, I've limited, all right, so her concern is that. Seventy-five and ninety percent are. Are different limits and that we're treating. Different districts, you, you, you know, depending on the district, we're treating them differently.
Up top, you can do an undo.
Yeah, it's just, I, I think our existing bylaw has had that for quite some time. So I just would say go with this and we'll see what happens. Similar comment is above. Comment, the second comment there is that we didn't have a, a quantity of exposed ledge that could be removed. Way, way back in oh five and then in this two thousand seventeen version of this that I wrote, there was a limit, but. It was considered very unworkable, so. I think, you know, again, in looking at what's happened over near Cunningham Bridge. Any type of ledge removal is something we'd wanna take a look at, so I wouldn't have a threshold amount. There is for clearing, but not for ledge removal, so. I think that's okay.
But don't we have a guideline by, you know, kind of the exemption?
No, I mean, well.
Where we say like, you know.
We're gonna get into the volume issue, but no, the, the, the intent was to. Any removal of exposed ledge face that was not exempt would trigger a review. Because of the value of the resource we're trying to protect and its character and. To, you know, uniqueness of the character of the town as well as ledge, yeah, so. Okay. This is a point about putting in a certain date, so Cassandra, can you answer that one, do some research? The original bylaw was passed in.
So you just need to know the date that the original bylaw was adopted to put the date in? Yeah, I can determine that.
All right, now let's get to this, so. Sorry, I'm having trouble with this, guys. All right, so in response to the comments.
Something I just quickly asked, did you do the, the editing in here or did Carolyn do the editing in here?
Most of this is Carolyn's, it's a combination at this point.
Okay, okay.
So I'm responding to that note, on this note, so this. This needs to get out, because we just discussed why, trying to. All right, now. Alright, now Kevin, this comment about the volume. Slowly tell me what you're thinking.
The, 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 okay, if you're gonna excavate a lot, a parcel, okay, it needs to be constrained. The thought we had with regard to constraining what could be moved, okay, because people are moving all sorts of material, exposed ledge, near surface ledge, okay. Um, they're, they're changing the topography of lots so that, you know, it completely, uh, i- i- is, is an easier buildable surface, it has more square footage for parking, it has more square footage for, and level surfaces for pools, for landscaping, all that stuff. There's gotta be some constraint to that, okay? The thought that we had, um, in our discussions, uh, Birgit and I, was that an opportunity to constrain it would be what is the volume of material that's gonna be excavated from a structure below grade?
Okay, so what this is saying is that when, where earth removal is necessary, is necessarily excavated in connection with lawful construction of the primary structure systems, you know, utilities. Again, those are the things that were limiting the exemptions to those three things. Uh, provided that the volume of material removed does not exceed the volume required to build the structure, so that's the limitation. So if you're telling us you're gonna put up a house with a four thousand square foot footprint, and you're putting a full basement underneath that, they are gonna be able, it will be exempt from them to remove both the surface ledge and then the subsurface ledge to the, only to the limit necessary to build that basement. That's what that's saying.
And, and there could be an assumed depth of that basement, it could be twelve feet or something, you know, within the footprint of that house.
Well, I mean, that's where, you know, I mean, again, with a special permit, we are probably going to engage in expert, you know, peer review. And you know, somebody tells us they're going to do a six-foot-high basement, a seven-foot-high basement. I'm sure there is a mathematical way of figuring out what the quantity of material that's going to be removed. And then I guess. I guess, uh, you know, if we have a proposal for a twelve-foot-high basement, you know, does that, where you get into the special permit, can we say, do you really need twelve feet? Isn't an eight-foot basement a good enough, a seven-foot basement? Yeah.
I, I would, I would encourage making it, the, the, the reroute right, simple, and make an assumption. If it's twelve foot, we can do that, or carry that across the board, it's better than what we have now if we say it's a twelve-foot basement, or ten, or whatever it is, okay, whatever's appropriate. Um, within the, um, area, you know, we have the area for the building and let's just assume a set depth, I mean, a basement is ceiling height plus the, or the, um, concrete, plus whatever is beneath the concrete, you know, for excavation purposes, for drainage or for aeration, whatever's necessary. If we just say a set, and maybe it's on the generous side, depth of that basement of twelve feet, then we'd, we'd have it covered and we don't have to start splitting hairs.
So you wanted to say that. Alright, so the, the language says that you can't remove more than you need to. And you wanna say add to that a basement excavation of, you know, cannot exceed X feet? Is that what you wanna add?
Not X feet, the, the area that's excavated for the basement of the structure. That, on the volume of the area that's excavated below grade for the basement of the structure.
But that's what this is saying, it's saying that the volume removed does not exceed the volume required to build the structure.
Yeah.
Does not exceed the below grade, I, I cut off.
Well, that, that's what I was just thinking. How about that? Is there a highlight color that's other than yellow? Oh, Carolyn, see that.
I, I, I don't, I, I think you got a strike, the volume required to the building, the corresponding structure and any basement to that structure? You, you don't need to build a corresponding structure. The volume required to build any basement of the structure. Hey, why are we counting areas above the, above grade? I don't, I, if it's a two-and-a-half-story home, the volume's gonna be huge, that's what we're running into.
No, 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 no.
That's the way this reads, Tom, it reads below grade and the volume of the corresponding structure. And, and is additive, above grade and below grade, we were just thinking below grade basement.
Are, are you interpreting this, are you interpreting that the volume they'd be allowed to remove is the volume of the entire house?
The way it's written with and, yeah, the volume required to build the corresponding structure, a structure is the building of the house, and any basement to that structure. I'm just, we're just talking about the basement area of the structure, the volume required to build the basement to a structure is the volume we're talking about.
I mean, I, I can't, I, I don't see the interpretation of this that equates to the volume of the entire house.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's the volume, we're measuring the volume of material, be, earth and material being removed. Not the volume of the entire structure, I, I. The quantity, the priority that the volume of material removed, that's what we're talking about. Does not exceed the volume required to build material removed at the surface and below grade does not exceed the volume required to build a corresponding structure in any basement, I, I, I don't know.
That's not specific enough, that's getting us back to the situation of ambiguity. It has to be something more.
How is it ambiguous? Please tell me how it's ambiguous.
Because, because you're talking about the structure, then you have to define that.
Well, that, that's easy to define, I think it's easy to define a structure, yeah. We can, we can, you can get a volume from a structure, okay?
Yeah, but why, why are you interpreting that the volume of the entire house up to the roof is what we're talking about?
Because of the way it reads, Tom. The way it reads with the and, can you strike out of that the volume required to build the corresponding structure? Can you get rid of that? How about, let's just say the volume required to build any basement of a structure? Sewer system utilities or, or what have you, the way you have it written there. Why do you want to add it, add the volume?
It, it, oh my.
Well, I think the intent here is where earth removal is necessary to limit the excavation of the earth remove, removal materials, why are we including a volume, an additive volume of materials equal to the above-grade portion of a structure?
About, we're not talking about the volume of the building, we're specifically in this portion here talking about the volume of material removed.
Yeah, I know, and we're trying to limit that to the volume of material equal to the amount of a basement for the, for the structure on that parcel. We're trying to limit that here. That's the intent.
What we had earlier, not to specifically refer to basement, was to say to the below-grade portion of primary building.
Well, some places won't have a basement.
That's right. And if a structure doesn't have a basement, then there would be even less need to remove earth and material. Except for utilities to connect that building.
There's no question that we're not talking about the volume of the entire building.
I think that was the very good, you know, kind of intention of how it was written before and, and I just after the, the way that I see Cunningham Bridge being built down, it, it just, you know, kind of. We need to be more specific.
Alright, material removed at the surface or below grade does not exceed the volume required to build a foundation and basement of primary structure.
That sounds good.
Okay. Alright. See what Carolyn says about that. Alright, is there anything here in Burdick's notes we haven't covered?
Okay, so one, no, um, but, um, we did say last week that we wanted to include walkout, walkways and driveways to the, um, list of accessory buildings, now I think if we, if we leave the driveway, um, um, as is like in general, that is maybe too general because then we may get pushback, um, because obviously people need driveways, um, but if we could, uh, specify that more, you know, and kind of, you know, kind of, um, they are necessary, um, if they go beyond the, the direct access to house and garage.
Now you're creeping the driveway exemption back in now.
Um, I think that was still up there, there it is, so at the very end, detached garages, pool, walkways and driveways, so but, um, that was, yeah.
Yeah, meaning those things are now going to have a, require a permit if you're going to, if you're going to remove earth to do it, or exposed ledge. And the exemptions that existed before for those things no longer exist.
Okay, okay, so, okay, that's fine. That's, uh, no, that's, that's good, I just wanted to make sure that we are not getting unnecessary pushback just because of that and.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get pushed back on all, everything here, you're removing exemptions. Uh, you know, unfortunately, we can point to the Cunningham Bridge project as, you know, exhibit A, why we're doing that.
Yes. By the way, they have further, you know, kind of, um, they seem to prepare for more, you know, I kind of walked by there today, even, even more blasting, um. Is there any, you know, anybody looking over their shoulder? Um. Oh, and one.
Probably not measuring it, that's, that's certainly possible.
Yeah, okay, one other, we, I don't know whether we still have that, we had, um, the, the, uh, concession saying, okay, if you remove ledge in one place and if you keep it on the same property, uh, you just remove it from one side to the other, then, then you're good. Um, it, again, take the Cunningham Bridge, what they could do is take all the ledge that they blasted and build a huge, you know, kind of stone wall wherever they please and, and, and then that would be fine, so.
Well, that goes back to the, to the old original earth removal bylaw. Which is used to, existed from nineteen sixty-nine until we changed, until we adopted land alteration and that, and that was a typical bylaw that was, every town had, and it was to stop people from using a lot as a quarry to take out rock, to take out soil and sell it somewhere else.
Oh, wow.
So that, that's the, the idea of keeping it on site, however you then intend to use it, is so that we're not encouraging a commercial activity where earth, earth material, earth and materials being sold, excavated and sold. That's why that's there, that's vestige of the old earth removal bylaw.
Okay. Um. Then the other thing, the last thing we, we, we were discussing, um, was to have not only is what Kevin refers as the daylighted ledge to, 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 to work with, but maybe also a parameter around it, I, I know Kevin mentioned that last, uh, meeting already, that the ledge does not necessarily end right there, you know, and kind of at the end of where we see it. Um, and maybe we want to, um, you know, extend the area to like a certain footage around it, five feet, ten feet parameter around daylighted ledge, so that's, that's another thinking.
The, the thought is that anyone that's a gardener or anything, you know, knows you can go some distance away from exposed ledge and your shovel, you know, abruptly stops just like a few inches below the surface. Um, and I, like I mentioned at the last meeting, um, you know, ledge doesn't just end where the grass starts, it doesn't go straight down, you know, typically it follows that same slope that it is exposed at the, uh, daylighted portion of it. So if there was some buffer, um, that could be afforded by an additional, um, uh, distance away from that daylighted portion, ten feet, fifteen feet, whatever, whatever the amount is, that would give us an addition.
Where, where's, specifically, where in the bylaw are you looking to put this in?
It may go, it, it, we could add that to the definition of the, um, uh, ledge, we have that, yeah. Exposed ledge face, there.
And then what would you suggest adding?
Kevin? Um.
Exposed ledge, read me the definition, okay, I can't read it right now, I don't have the connectivity to do so. And add a perimeter to it, or exposed ledge, daylighted ledge, okay, light.
Any, this definition's very simple, any portion of rock formation lying above pre-construction grade at any given point.
And an area fifteen feet outward from that area of daylighted ledge would be considered exposed ledge.
Okay, what's the rest of the board think about that? It's kind of solid, and subsurface rock formation extending fifteen feet from the exposed area. I, I think that's. I I think that's. I mean, I don't know, it's problematic to me, but. That were overreaching.
All right, then what's your suggestion?
Well, the suggestion is to stick with what the bylaw is today, is just what you can see.
What you can see is an ex is is a function of how long. Ditrious has. Built up in a particular area.
I know, but.
Or whether it's in a, in a manicured area that has already exposed some ledge. So, yeah.
But you could say that about all ledge on all lots, it was probably all exposed at one point in time.
So what is the point of alleged by law here? Let's let's get down the brass tacks. What is the purpose that we're trying to accomplish here?
The original purpose of this. Was that. The exposed ledge in town is unique to our town as compared to other coastal communities around us, which are more sandy and marshy. And that that visual. Sight of that rock was the appeal of Cohasset. And in a project in the mid two thousand, somebody blasted a driveway up the side of a. A piece of ledge on Beach Street. And it was designed to prevent that kind of. Marring of the visual landscape and the visual effect. What's below the ground is not something we can see. What's. And is not as concerning as to what creates. The unique beauty characteristic of Cohasset.
So I'm just gonna add to that.
Always, always designed to protect what we can see because what we can see is what is the unique quality of Cohasset.
Part of what's coming in front of us are these remaining more difficult lots, the lots that haven't been accessed. Or didn't have the ability to be accessed in a cost-effective manner years ago. Okay, these are lots that have greater topography, perhaps more, uh, rock features. And. Those, the topography, the greater rock features, the ledge, okay, the exposed ledge. Are unique features, okay? You know, the the exposed ledge and the unexposed ledge go hand in hand with what's making that parcel unique and the topography on it. That made it so difficult to develop years ago. And I'm just, I'm just, you know, let's protect, let's, let's, let's not be afraid to take a larger. Take, uh, you know, as to what. Is making that parcel unique. It's not just that, you know, ten foot area of exposed ledge. Based on the prevailing winds and nothing could grow on it. You know, it's probably be that whole topographic feature that's. Provided by alleged, it's just below the the surface at that lot. So this provides more protection and acknowledgement of that by including an area beyond what's just exposed now.
Alright, I hear what you're saying. The. Original land alteration by law and this one is giving exemptions to allow people to build a house. And get the utilities to service that house. And that those exemptions exist in order that we are not. Preventing the development of the lot, we're regulating it. In a way we've never regulated before and most towns don't because they don't have the kind of ledge that we have. But if we can, if we make the restrictions such that they can't develop a lot at all. We've done a regulatory taking and the town will have to pay for that lot.
But Tom, you're not, you're, you're, you're making it sound like we're always going to have a consequence that leads to a taking.
I'm telling you what the law is, that's what I do, that is what the law is. The United States Supreme Court created the concept of legislative, of regulatory taking twenty.
I understand, Tom, I understand that.
And if you take where, no, will you let me fit, and in Massachusetts, I will say that the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court has a. Fairly more open mind to this than than the US Supreme Court. Basically, if you can get any beneficial use of your property. And that doesn't necessarily mean building a house. It's not going to be a taking, but you run that risk of doing so and that and all of Massachusetts zoning law is not a prohibition. It is a compromise of conditioning development. And zoning law in any state in this country is the same way. We don't prohibit things because now we have. Court decisions that say if you do prohibit somebody's beneficial use of their land, you're going to have to pay for it. And that's the balancing act we're trying to do here that we tried to do when we originally passed this by law. By protecting the visual impact only and allowing people to have reasonable development around that. If if you're going to start niggling the edges here and saying stuff below the surface is all going to be regulated. Then just say it, then let's get rid of, then let's just say any removal of ledge, subsurface or surface is going to require a special permit. And then what if we say it's more detrimental, we we had that and Cunningham Bridge property comes to us and we say, oh, this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Denied. We're gonna get appealed. Probably not gonna win and at worst could be, could be. You know, the process could start to say it's regulatory taking, pay me for my lot. It's a balancing act. Alright, I mean, I, if you. That language that's there and highlighted, you know, we want to go to the other boards, we have a month away from our. Hearing. We have a public forum we're gonna do in between. That's fine, let's go and try to sell it to people. But, you know, Ca- Carolyn hasn't seen it yet, I wish she was here to see this, but she'll see it and and. You're, you're just, you're walking a fine line with any regulation. And if we told the guy at Cunningham Bridge, no, you can't build at all because you're blasting too much ledge. We'd be paying for it. We'd be buying that lot, I can assure you. Or we'd be overturned by the courts. The courts in the state are not as protective of us on the permitting level here that as they should be, in my opinion, but. That's the, that's the balancing act, but if you want to put that in there and and justify that to the public, I have no problem with it. Okay, but I'm just warning you is not to go too, too far with this. And I get it, we're in a period of time where what's left has to be blasted to hell to be built on. And, you know, aiming up in your section of town, it's because there's a sewer there. You couldn't perk ledge before, although there was one guy who said he could, but you couldn't perk ledge and and then the trade off of getting sewers. Is that it opens up land to development that wasn't able to be developed before because you couldn't get a septic system in there. That that's the trade offs, you know, that are made all the time and you you just have to be careful about how far you can go, that's all. So. You know, I can get up there to forum in in front of the select board and the zoning board and explain this, but. I want, Kevin, I want you there too to to champion this, okay? I think it's running a risk of going too far.
And and is that based on the, you know, fifteen feet? I mean, tell me a proposed difference. Tell me, tell me what 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 you think is not too far. Is it just going up to the edge?
Well, going up to the edge is what it is today. I think that is, I mean, a- again, it's not a perfect bylaw, but we can't write the perfect bylaw. We can't stop blasting. We can't stop excavation. If we do and we prevent all of that from happening, we've done a regulatory taking of a lot. It's that simple. In my opinion, on one lawyer's opinion, that's. You know, and our town council is gonna tell us, you know, she's, she's there to advise the town not to take risk, you know, so. You know, we'll, we'll put this in, let us see it, we'll, we we can discuss it briefly next week and again, if we go to the public with it, that's fine. And we'll see what happens. I don't want to lose the, all the changes of the bylaw at town meeting because of this. You know, this, this can be amendments and taking out a phrase like this on the floor. Uh, that's the other thing, I don't want this losing at town meeting because the other, the removal of those exemptions, I think is critical. And, uh, so anyway, that's, that's all I'll say and we'll just leave it here for now and, you know, if somebody wants to refine the language, feel free, but. Let's see what Carolyn has to say and we'll, we'll go with it, you know, and. You, I mean, you know what's gonna happen at the public forum, we're gonna get ten people, but, you know, we're gonna see the select board, we're gonna see the zoning board. Uh, probably both of them before our public hearing and, you know, we'll just see what everybody thinks about it. And we'll leave the fifteen feet and if Carolyn says, you know, maybe cut this back to ten or five, fine. Let's go for the extreme. Alright, does everybody get where, is everybody get where I'm coming from? I mean, I'm just trying to play.
Alright, I think your points are well taken and valuable, Tom, and, um, I, I, I think that's the right path forward.
And that's what we will do. Alright, so the rest of this, I think we addressed. Alright.
Um, just a quick note, if you scroll up a little bit in one of your replies to Carolyn's comment, you didn't hit enter, so it's not gonna save.
Do that all the time. Alright, thank you, alright. So next week we get the mitigation by law, hopefully. The ADU by law. I see that, you know, just glancing at this, as Carolyn has done. She followed what we suggested, which was. Choice one of her two choices, which is to only let one ADU on a lot. And. So that we understand this clearly, the ADU. Under the new state law. Is nine hundred square foot limit. Pure coincidence, or maybe not a pure coincidence that are existing by. Law also is nine hundred square feet, that's probably where we got the nine hundred from. Another one, uh, ADU called an ADU large. And we gave Carolyn the number of twelve hundred and fifty square feet for that. And that would be by special permit. But in both cases. There can only be one. ADU on a lot. Alright, so the rest of this. Is. Relying on Carolyn's expertise to have something that's in compliance with the new state law.
Remind me, how did we get to nine hundred?
Nine, nine hun, well, how did we get to nine hundred? I can't tell you, uh, I I'm guessing that. Whatever prior state regulation there might have been on ADUs at nine hundred, but the nine hundred limit for as of right is is in this new state law. As as Carolyn has explained it. We. Woody Chittick of the zoning board, as I said at our last meeting, had asked for the opportunity to have a larger ADU. Knowing many people. Who would like to have one that's larger. Given the sizes of their houses. So. At Carolyn's suggestion, we could do that, but but make it a special permit so it doesn't get out of hand. And we set on the number of twelve fifty. Now, I told Woody that, but. Um, you know, he, he said his responsibility was okay, so he hasn't, you know, he he may still come back and say twelve fifty is too small. But then there's the question of, you know, particularly if we have an ADU that's a freestanding structure, how. Big do we want another structure on a, what otherwise is a single family lot, so I think that's a reasonable number. And so nine hundred is as of right, twelve fifty, up to twelve fifty would be by special permit. And the state law apparently allows us to do that, we can, we can go larger. With a special permit process. Okay, any questions or comments about that? That seems to be.
Just a quick question, um, um, are we saying that we are, um, allowing more than one eighty unit? With a special permit or not at all?
No, in both, in both cases, it's just one per lot. So you are either going to build one inside your existing house or you're going to build one. In a freestanding structure, so. And I don't know, Cassandra, are we getting any applications for them since we changed the bylaw? Or is it too soon? I changed it last spring. Or let, no, two, last fall.
Maybe the more appropriate question is, have people come into town as a result of the change in the law so that they can be. Um, acceptable under the law.
I haven't heard of any inklings of anybody coming in for that.
Okay.
I think people would be afraid. I mean, I know people will be afraid, they won't come in.
Well, you know. It's some, you know, we all, we all assume that there are ADUs that exist that just have never been permitted and, you know. That's, that's an enforcement question and, you know, traditionally have not come down hard on people for that, so I don't expect that to change. Alright, the next one we were gonna discuss tonight is this one. Simple. Alright, Carolyn's note is about the add-on that we bring in, but the basic. The floor area ratio is, you know, the argument is for proportional zoning, that's a term. That's been embedded around since two thousand seventeen, citizens group I was part of brought this idea for. Actually, I said before, the term proportional zoning came from a zoning board members, no longer on the board. Um, but it is a term of art and, um. The change here would be to the lot coverage that we now allow. For the, the building. Uh, the total lot coverage is the. Primary building plus all the accessory hardscapes, so that wouldn't change. And so the, the numbers that are proposed here. Are based on the average house size in each district. As of, I believe the data I had was twenty twenty. Two or three, I'll have to look at that up again. And. You know, in terms of house size right now, you have a twenty percent footprint on the lot. But then you multiply that by two and a half or three stories and that gives you a volume, a potential volume, a cubic volume of the house that. Could be quite large. There's very, very few properties in town that. Exceed twenty percent or approach it even, um. I believe the last time I looked and I want to ask Cassandra to get me the numbers again, but that new house on Little Harbor. That went, that we permitted as a large home review for ten thousand plus square feet, I think it's a very large lot, so, but I think that one is up close to seventeen percent of lot. So that's coming closer. But. One of the points of this is to, for proportionality is that a house. Be in some scale to its lot size and some scale to its neighborhood. And is another tool like our large home review to address what is increasingly. Being seen by us and in other towns that people are building exceedingly large houses, very much. Um, in the mid two thousands, they called it mansionization. That's when, you know, our consultant Judy Barrett. Who did the master plan that was finished in two thousand four, she's the one who brought the idea of large home review to us. And and it was a response to mansionization. And we had a couple of classic examples of mansionization going on next door in Norwell that we could all point to at the time. Um. So. Um, the, the property at Cunningham Bridge is one that I'm. Gonna look at the numbers. I mean, I'm sure it's a large lot, and a large lot would still have a large house on it. That's what proportionality is all about, but an example, a recent example that I keep citing is the new lot that we. Had foremade across from Deer Hill School. It's fifty-five thousand square feet. Um, twenty percent of that is eleven thousand square feet. Multiply that by two and a half stories, you could have a house that's over thirty thousand square feet in size. That's not what. That's not what's being built there. What's being built and was proposed to us was a house that I believe is. Fifty-two or fifty-seven hundred square feet. Which actually in RB would fit right in to this F A O. So I think a lot of people have some common sense and don't want to have some mega structure, but. By measuring a building in three dimensions rather than just two, we, we. Give some difference to scale and to size and sustainability of a house, you know, that we, that's another argument for it about. How much energy needs to go in, and I know there's all kinds of modern energy deficiencies in new houses, but still. Uh, an amount of materials and everything that goes into it. So, you know, the house on Sawyer Street that we just permitted would fit into this. Um, our, our A, which is our smallest district in terms of lot size. That's where the average is approaching the current twenty percent, and that is not. Not surprising. Uh, given the way things are built. Now, our C. Actually has an, uh, a lot size, I mean, uh. An average house size that is half of what is possibly permitted. And I don't know if Cunningham Bridge is. RB or RC. We'll check that. The one down on Little Harbor is RB, and I think the one on Little Harbor would, would exceed this. Had it been proposed under this. And what does that mean? Well, rather than a ten thousand square foot house, it might have been a seven thousand square foot house, still a big house. Cause it's a good sized lot. So that's the simple argument for it. Um. I know people have opposing views of this, but I, you know, and. The, the bylaw itself is simple to write, cause it's simple changes. Um. You know, when we come to our recommendations that are hearing, I. You know, again, I've. Asked the select board and I've asked this board to let this go to town meeting, let them decide, let the people decide this, because. We both hear the point of view that people should do what they want. We also. Sit on this board and hear people complain about giant houses being built in their neighborhood. So let's let the people decide this. Um. The number makes sense because they're based on our average development patterns up to this point in time. So we're not saying houses need to get smaller than what we've done, but we are using our current averages. But. Have been skewed by the increase in house sizes that's demonstrable under our assessors data that the. Working group had gathered. Um, it's demonstrable over since the year two thousand. Not only has our population gone up since two thousand. Fairly substantial percentage, so has our house size. Uh, our average house size. So we're just. Basically. This proposal is putting into stone our development patterns today. Not twenty years ago, not thirty years ago. Um, and if you have this lot size that supports a larger structure, more power to you. Um, but. Um. I don't know if anybody wants to comment on this now. It's eight thirty, you know, and I don't, I did not intend for this to be last. And late at night. I didn't anticipate the Heritage Lane thing going as long as it did. Um. But. You know, again. We will have our public forum. Try to, you've seen the select board and the zoning board before our hearings. Uh, be good to get some input. Get some publicity out about it on Facebook and. See what the community thinks. And if they turn it down, they turn it down and we're. Where we are, which will be twenty percent lot coverage. And. Just have to know that. With twenty percent lot coverage, somebody can build something. Truly. Humongous for a lot in, in comparison to their neighbors that were developed longer ago, so. That's, that's the things to consider, both what we could have happened and what our bylaw allows to possibly happen. Even though it hasn't happened to the extent. Again, freely admit that the data does not show that many properties. Exceed twenty percent coverage, but there are some. Um. Or, or do we put into place and freeze into place? You know, a reasonable lot size based on our averages, uh, house size based on our averages today. So. That's all I'll say on it. The other, you know, Carolyn has one note here. We have talked about this before and we had agreed that, we all had agreed that. You could exceed that floor area ratio by ten percent if it was by special permit. And remember that any zoning limit. Is a hard limit that if you try to exceed it. Would be. Require a variance and a variance is not something you're ever gonna get easily in coal acid, so. To soften that a little bit, we were going to include the fact that. A certain exceeding of the floor area ratio could be done by special permit rather than by variance. And Carolyn is. Suggesting we put some criteria in here. Um. I mean, the, the standard special permit review is substantially more detrimental. I don't know that we need to get too, too specific. And I don't. You know, the hardship, by the way, hardship is a variance standard, so we're trying to avoid the need for a variance because, and it would be. If we were applying a hardship standard and we were applying it differently than the zoning board applies the hardship standard, that would create a mess between the two boards and. You know, a regulatory conundrum that we have two boards deciding different ways, so. I wouldn't use hardship. I don't, the public benefit is, I don't know what somebody could offer, but you know. Uh, you know, if you let me have a slightly bigger house than this FAR, I'll give you a basketball court somewhere in town. I, I don't know that we need to get into that kind of. You know, incentive, incentivizing because. You know, I just think the regular standard is, is, is a house that's gonna be slightly larger than the FAR that we're allowing. Going to be substantially more detrimental, and I think we're in a position to make that judgment. As we would with any other special permit, so. Anyway, I'm sorry, I can't, I have my screen minimized here for who's here, so who was that speaking, Kevin?
Yeah, 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 Tom. I, I don't think, um, we have all members here to weigh in on this. Some have stepped off. Um, the way, the way you've presented it, um. Um, it shows kind of a linear, um. From the different areas, A, B, and C, um, with it going downward and. The point made by, um, Clark with regard to this, and I don't mean to speak for him, um, it'd be helpful if he was here to do so himself, but. Was that this would create some limits in some neighborhoods that have already seen development, um, that would go beyond these limits, like say the Hillside neighborhood. Um.
I'm sorry, you broke up for a minute.
Uh, I, the, 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 he, Clark had put some examples together for various neighborhoods in town. One of which was the Hillside neighborhood. And it, he would, he, he pointed out that that would constrain some of the, the. Opportunities to change some of the existing homes over there from maybe a one and a half story home into, you know, a, a, a more vertical. Um, village style home on what are. Acknowledged to be small lots. So.
Yeah, well, it depends. I don't know if Hillside is RA or RB. I mean, obviously RA has already. Larger average lot coverage because they are smaller lots.
That's right. So just, I bring up that point because when I look at. The way it is now, I think it goes twenty seventeen and nine or, or something like that. You had that section pulled up.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, what it.
Oh, I'm sorry, seventeen, twelve, and nine.
Right, and today it's twenty across the board.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I think to Clark's point, perhaps in the, in the seventeen, twelve, and nine. Looks somewhat linear to me, but you know, perhaps maybe there could be a larger accommodation for C. And then a slightly larger co- accommodation for B, and then maybe A could stay where it is at seventeen. You know what I mean? Just, just.
I, I hear, I hear you, and, and again, this is based, these, these, these percentages come out by looking at the, and this is data that. My fellow members of the working group had gathered, you know, back in twenty-one.
Yeah.
Um. This is data based on the average house size in each district. And, and you can only compute that measured against the maximum lot size. I know Clark's made a point about that, that lot sizes vary, but you know, you, you have to have some basis of measurement, and so. I, I, I mean, I've thought about RB. Being fifteen and RC being twelve.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, exactly. That's exactly what, when I see something like this and, and Clark's point was well taken with regard to the. Smaller size of the lots and certainly C and to a lesser extent in B. Um, you know, I don't discount that a, a, a limit of probably seventeen, the way it is written already for A is, is. Appropriate. I mean.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I could, and I'm gonna have other examples of some of the bigger projects that have been going on lately, but. On that one on Sawyer Street, for example. Um. I believe that the house size, the year building. Came in at point one two, it might have even come in at point one one. Um. When you converted it to FAR. If it was point one five, you know, that house rather than being. It's something in the five thousands. I forget if it was fifty-two or fifty-seven, but um. It would be six thousand square feet, perhaps. It wouldn't be going to eight thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be going to the eleven thousand square foot footprint. Times two or three stories that the current by law would allow, so I, I. I'm just saying, these were, it was a logical choice of numbers rather than me picking random things out of thin air. But. If there was some upward movement of RB and RC. To make this palatable, I wouldn't have a huge problem with that. But I would not have RB and RC. Um, approach. The twenty percent lot covers. The intent of this is to substantially deviate from that because. The potential house size of the twenty percent lot coverage is astounding, it's large and.
Uh huh.
And we see the trend that people, you know, for egos or whatever, they, that's what they're going towards. And it's gonna come to the day where I think we are gonna see more of that approach lot coverage, you know, twenty percent coverage. Um.
So maybe further discussion either at the next.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I think that's reasonable, and I, believe me, I've thought about it before. I've thought about having, you know, point one two, point one five, point one seven.
Yeah. Okay.
So, all right. Um, well, there's only three of us here, it looks like, all I can see. So. Cassandra, as far as our. Hearing.
I'm here, Tom.
No, you're here, okay, so. In terms of scheduling, Cassandra is going to make a, is making arrangements to rent the, uh, well, not to, to get, uh, Willcutt Commons. For a hybrid public forum like we've had in the past.
Yes, that has been reserved.
That'll be Monday, September thirty. Um, next, our next meeting on the eighteenth, we're gonna wrap up the frontage and, and the.
Did you say Sunday, Monday, September third?
Thirtieth.
Okay, sounded like third.
Thir- thirtieth, I'm sorry. And then. Working with the select board and the zoning board will get in there. Either, you know, hopefully around that first week of October. As far as our. Section five hearings, you gave us two dates, Amy. I would start with the first night. Publicize it for that night. We'll start it up after we do our normal permitting business that we have that night. And then if necessary, take it into. I think it was the sixteenth, it's the ninth and the sixteenth? I, I would suggest we, we know, we. Uh, notice this for starting on the ninth, and if need be, we carry into the sixteenth, which right now is a non-meeting night, but. So that we could, if needed, we devote it solely to the section five hearing and get it done. And then advisory, I would plan to see after the fact, I'd probably see the select board after the fact too of the section five hearings, but. Um. And then I don't know when, town meeting is now what, early December?
Town meeting is December ninth. Um, you'd have to see the select board at some point prior to the start of the section five hearing, because they have to officially kick it to you guys.
Yeah, yeah. If, I'm, I'm gonna leave it to you to work on that with Tracy.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, I, I would have done that last night if it was an election day, but. It's their meeting tonight as well, so. Um, and then. Look to see when we can meet with the zoning board at or around our section five hearing, pretty, again, preferably before, and they meet what, on a Thursday?
No, they meet on a Tuesday, so their next hearing is, uh. Believe, next week and then. Think October fourth, let me double check. It's October first. Is there October meeting?
Okay. If, if, if the select board. The select board would have to see us then either September. Twenty-something, the week before public forum. Or. Tuesday, the eighth. Now, they seem to meet almost weekly, so I hope they can accommodate that.
Uh, I can work with Tracy on that. Um, I do just.
Otherwise, if it's the first. Um. If it's the first, we'll just have to split up. And somebody go to the zoning board and somebody go to the select board. Or, or, or just time it that I'm doing two, two boards in one night, I don't care.
I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that they need you to be there or anyone to be there in order to kick it to the planning board, but I know that they do want an update prior to that. Chris had mentioned to me earlier that, um, they may be looking for an update the seventeenth. Had Ellen reached out to you about that at all?
No, but I'm gonna be away. I'm still on vacation, so.
Gotcha. Okay. He wasn't sure on it. Um, he just vaguely mentioned it in passing.
The, the twenty, the twenty-fourth would work.
Okay.
The twenty-fourth, the first, and the eighth are the three Tuesdays that we have before we start our section five year, so. Between those two boards, we'll figure it out. I'll worry about the. Alternative Energy Committee. Um, just showing them what the final product is and, uh. We'll do advisory after the section five years. With, you know, advisory will be with a finished product. And then. You know, depending on the. Attendance and the feedback of the September thirty forum, we have time in November to do another forum if we need, if we think we need it. And I'm probably going to, you know, little quickie videos explaining it like I did the last time for Facebook. And then be done. Oh, and for the ones of viewers still here, we are gonna slip in another article too, uh. Zoning Board has pointed out that when we redid Article Four and the Table of Uses last fall. One of the notes to that table that I think has to do with how you measure to the center line of a road. Was taken out. And they don't know if that was intentional, if it was an oversight. Uh, Judge Cutler's retired, so I don't know if. There's an answer to that, but the zoning board wants it back then. They think it's important. So. We are going to try to accommodate them by. Putting that back. That would be the tenth article. Of the ninth, ninth or tenth. I don't know where we are right now. So, um. So that, that's gonna be just a quick add-on. I don't, it's not worthy of a lot of discussion if they think it's important. I don't. Particularly see it, but that's okay. Um, so the next meeting, we'll go back to this FAR again with everybody here. Um, we are expecting the. Mitigation and Development Impact Bylaw. And we will discuss the frontage and the cluster bylaws. And we will discuss the frontage and the cluster bylaws, and. You've seen my notes on the cluster bylaw, and I'm not sure we necessarily need to do anything except maybe. Lower the development size, which we've talked about for years, it's subject only to development of ten acres or better. Um, we might lower that, but, uh, I don't know that we necessarily need to change anything. Alright, so, we don't have any minutes, um, unless there's anything else, entertain a motion to adjourn, eight forty-four.
Motion to adjourn put forth.
Second.
Thank you, alright, uh. Any other questions, comments? If not, uh, alphabetical roll call, I'm Callie and I.
Amy Westmore, I.
Kevin Hine, I.
And Deirdre Hobson, I. Good question, she's I.
Great, um, thank you all for your attendance and patience, um.
Thank you, Tom.
Sorry, that first one went longer than it, never, never expect those lot releases to be controversial, but. Anyway, alright, um, Cassandra, I will send you this version. Um, to send to Carolyn so she sees my comments and some of the notes. There's a couple of other things to clean up here, so I'll, I'll get that to you shortly, if you could send it to her tomorrow, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, thanks, thank you all.
Bye y'all, thank you.
Have a nice evening.